Thank you.
So, thank you so much, everyone, for coming today. This has been so informative and I'm really excited about this program and to get it out to the city and the community so that everyone learns a lot more about it.
Great.
I'm gonna call a meeting to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Set.
I'll set. Okay, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
You too. I think everybody was today.
No, just to be with our team. It was boring, it was like awkward. Because when I never tell the words to them, I was in the studio, so I was waiting for them.
I know.
But, you guys said, I don't want to go. This is the best thing. We're here for the celebration. It's too exciting for us to let me come out of here. But, thank you so much. We have two minutes before this meeting starts.
My daughter does an electric song.
Oh, yeah. All right. Have a great rest of your night. Thank you.
The mouse isn't working. What do we have for you?
Hello, Councilor.
How are you?
I'm green.
Hello.
I said I'm green.
That's awesome.
Yes, it is.
Very happy.
I have to wear the, I have to wear it. Is there the collar?
Yes. It's heavy. It's heavy. It's heavy. It's heavy. Ah, I do not. I'm so sorry.
Please be seated. All right, everybody, please rise. Dear God, today as the session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in this decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted this day of the wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessings on all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Now, please remain standing for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, with desolate liberty, justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated.
Good. How are you doing?
Clerk, please call the robe.
Counsel Elliot.
Here.
Counsel Kennedy.
Here.
Counsel Leahy.
Here.
Counsel Mercia.
Here.
Counsel Milonoz. As nine present.
All right, I believe we have three moments of silence. Start with Counsel Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would ask that the chamber be docking in memory of Robert B. Duffy, the beloved husband of Anita Duffy, who passed away unexpectedly on Sunday morning, September 9, 2018, at Lowell General Hospital. He was 78 years old. Bob was born in Lowell on March 7, 1940, the son of the late Leo and Catherine Kenevich Duffy. He was a proud graduate of St. Peter's Grammar School and Keith Academy, the class of 1958. Bob also attended Mermer College and was proud to have grown up in the Flats neighborhood of Lowell. Bob Duffy served with the U.S. Coast Guard and Reserves from 1962 to 1970. He married Anita McClellan, he was married to Anita McClellan for 48 years, and together they raised four loving children. Mr. Duffy was a field accountant for the New England Power Company for 15 years before joining the Lowell Fire Department in 1975. He was stationed for most of his career as a Lowell firefighter at Engine 9 on Rogers Street. Surviving Bob with his wife, Anita Duffy, are his children Sean Duffy and his wife, Kiko of Andover, Tara Duffy Hunt and her husband, Rob of Lowell, Sheila Duffy Walsh and her husband, Daniel of Chemsford, and David Duffy of the Lowell Fire Department and his wife, Kristen of Lowell. Bob Duffy also had nine grandchildren, including Courtney Duffy, Ryan Duffy, Megan Hunt, Keegan Hunt, Delaney Hunt, Liam Walsh, Colin Walsh, Jack Duffy, and Shay Duffy. Bob Duffy enjoyed daily walks around the Belvedere neighborhood with his wife, where he would talk to everyone. He was a lover of music and dancing, and especially loved Irish music and culture. Bob visited Ireland, Ireland when he was in his twenties, and eventually received his Irish citizenship. Robert B. Duffy was a man of faith, loyalty, honesty, and family. These are the principles in which he lived his life, raised his family, and served his country and his city.
Thank you. I think all of us that knew Bob Duffy, I would say, a simple term, he was a good man. And any one of us that would meet him, he always had a good word to say about everyone and everything, and he was always complimentary to try, you know, what we were trying to do in the city council, and he'd always say, you know, "You may find it hard some days, but the thing is, it's worth it." He was just a very good guy. Thank you. Next, we have Counsel Mercia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer a moment of silence and dock in chamber for Judge J. Skrekis, beloved husband of Avra Skrekis, who survives him. Judge was a graduate of Tilted Academy and proudly served his country as a Staff Sergeant in the United States Air Force during the Korean conflict. Judge was a member of the Transfiguration Greek Orthodox Church in Lowell, where he also was a past president of the Transfiguration Men's Guild. Before retiring, Judge was a licensed insurance agent and spent over 50 years in the industry working alongside his wife at their agency, Avra Insurance, in Lowell. Judge was an accomplished athlete, having played football, basketball, and baseball. He was inducted into the Drakehead High School Hall of Fame in 1984. In addition to his wife, Avra, Judge is survived by his daughter, Georgia Skrekis, a teacher at the Stark Loser School. He was also the father of the late Deborah Victoria Skrekis. To his family, many friends, relatives, and clients, we offer our sympathy to his family. He will be truly missed, and I would also like to offer a moment of silence and dock in chamber to all those who have passed away since our last city council meeting. They all will be truly missed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Counsel Milonoz.
Thank you, Mayor Samaras. I'd also like to offer a moment of silence and dock in chambers for Attorney Richard E. Noon, Attorney Noon, 88, longtime Lowell resident, died on Tuesday, September 25th after a period of declining health. He was predeceased by his wife, Mary Foley Noon, with whom he celebrated their 60th wedding anniversary in 2016. Richard graduated from St. John's Preparatory School in Danvers. He received a Bachelor of Arts degree from Providence College and a Law degree from Boston University. After working in the legal department for Allstate Insurance, he established the law firm of Strauss and Noon in West Concord and right here in Lowell. He was a longtime member of the Lowell Bar Association, conquered Minutemen, and ancient honor of Hibernians. For years, he took classes in speaking and reading Irish Gaelic. He proudly sang the Irish National Anthem at St. Patrick's Day Masses and the annual flag raising right here at City Hall. In 2017, he was the recipient of the Anam Kara Award from the St. Patrick's Parish Irish Cultural Committee. Richard particularly enjoyed many summers on the porch of the Pinehurst on Boston Avenue at Hampton Beach. He is survived by his daughter, Rosemary Noon, and her husband, Paul Marion, as well as his beloved grandson, Joseph Marion. Attorney Noon will truly be missed. Thank you.
Thank you. Will dock in the chambers? Thank you. Now, from the city clerk, Minutes of the Arts and Culture Subcommittee of September 25th, Finance Subcommittee, joint with the School Committee, Finance Subcommittee, September 25th. City council meeting September 25th. I need a motion to accept the place in file. By Counsel Elliot, second by Counsel Conway. Next, we go to communications from the city manager. Motion responses. The first is bicycle safety. Counsel Cirillo.
Hi, yes, thank you. It was a, it was a very good motion response. Could I please have, is Natasha Vance here to speak to it? Thank you so much. I see in the, I see in the motion response that during the open space and recreation plan, public participation process, citizens identified bicycles' master planning as a, as a priority. So, if you can just speak to what's in the report so that everyone watching can...
Sure.
Thank you so much.
Yeah. The motion was about the budgeted cost and implementation for bike safety, both painting and upkeep of bike lanes or creating some separated bike lanes in the city. This is, of course, not an inexpensive process. We have about 14 miles of dedicated bike lanes and another 21 miles of sharrows in the city. In order to repaint those every year would be somewhere between $8,000 to $21,000. That sounds like a big range. It depends on how frequently we put bike symbol markings on the ground. And then, in addition, there are some pretty complex markings on Father Morissette where we have green painting, and that isn't included in this cost. Generally speaking, people are more apt to use bike lanes if they're separated from traffic by a physical barrier. There are a number of ways you can do that. By, you can shift the parking lane over and, and paint some striping so that it's vehicle traffic, a parking lane, and then the bike lane. You can all, we can also install flexible posts that are bolted to the ground, and you typically put those in every 20 to 50 feet. And then, probably the most elaborate one would be to install curbing, two-sided curbing with maybe planters inside, which really creates a very visible barrier for vehicles. And the result of that is that we, it increases ridership. More people feel safe and comfortable, perhaps taking their children on a bike ride to getting them to school or to parks. But it is obviously not without expense. The expenses are listed in here on a, on a per-mile basis. The curbing installation is very expensive, and, you know, even, even just putting one single bike symbol down is, it's $4 per symbol, and if you put one every 50 feet, it can get expensive. The, the main takeaway, I think, from this motion response should be that we really need to have a bike master plan. One of the things that I hear frequently from residents who like to bike in the city is that our bike lanes go kind of from nowhere to nowhere, that they don't get you to a place you want to be, and a bike master plan would enable us to look at the places where we have gaps and places that would connect residents where they want to go, like parks or schools or downtown restaurants or their workplace. And we do want to create bike lanes that make people feel safe so that we do increase usage, because the more people who are biking, the less people who are driving, and that helps reduce congestion and, of course, parking, which are two of our big issues in the city of Lowell.
Right. Are there any grants that we could possibly, that could possibly help mitigate the cost for the city in helping with producing some bike lanes?
Yes, there certainly are, and we're actively looking at what grants might, might potentially work. Complete streets is always a possibility, but, you know, we have, kind of have to figure out the priority in terms of how we want to apply for those grants.
Right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
This is a good report. Thank you.
Counsel Lee.
Thank you. I just had a quick question. So, in a, in a city like Lowell where the roads are narrow, how do you do bike lanes? Should we be trying to focus a little bit more on education versus...
Yeah, that's a great question. So, one of the big issues we have here is we do have narrow roads and narrow right-of-way, and really, I think, one of the, the best things to do is to not put bikes on those more narrow roads, is to find, and so, one of the, where most of our bike lanes are, are on some of the roads where we have a lot of right-of-way, so we could fit the bike lanes and the traffic. What we need to do is try to connect those up, and sometimes what's best is putting a bike lane on a parallel road as opposed to the main road that gets you from point A to point B. The, you know, in order, I'll probably talk about this in the complete streets motion response next, but we don't need a bike lane on, on every road in the city. We need them in places just that connect one to another, and probably not on the more narrow roads, because, again, people won't use them because they won't feel particularly safe.
No, that's a good point. I'm glad you said that, so, you know, go into depth on that. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Next, we have the complete street policy. Again, Counsel Cirillo.
Hi, yes. This was a very good report. Thank you. And if you could just review what's in the report in this report for the complete streets, and I did see that, and I, I like that the DPD will meet with the engineering and DPW with input from Mass DOT to establish a mode shift goal and the appropriate performance measures, which can include changes in any of the following, and it just, but I, I think that that's really wonderful, that you're, you're setting this, a mode shift goal, and, and to, to see which streets are, are safe for bicycles and, and different types of mode of transportation. So, please, thank you.
Sure. So, you know, just to kind of restate for people at home, our complete streets policy essentially means that we have a goal of transportation equity for multimodal transportation, so that would include pedestrian access, ADA accessibility, bicycle access, vehicular access, and transit. So, trying to make sure that everyone who lives in the city, no matter what mode of transit, transportation they typically use, they can get around. We've made some really good progress since we adopted the complete streets ordinance. DPD, Development Services, Engineering, and DPW, we look at, we consider complete streets design guidelines in every project that we're designing or reviewing, so we, we're always looking at pedestrian and ADA accessibility, bike accommodations, and we're including them where it's feasible and appropriate. Again, not on every single street and not in every project, but, but where it can happen. There are a couple of things we need to do to truly be in compliance with our commitment based on the ordinance. We have to complete a crosswalk inventory for GIS, and DPD and Engineering, we've connected with some transportation engineering professors at UMass Lowell who have classes that would fit nicely with this, and so they're going to connect us with students, and they will actually perform the crosswalk inventory for us so we can update our GIS, which will also in turn help our Police and Sign Division who repaint the crosswalks, so then they'll know exactly where they all are, and to, you know, kind of develop a, a system for repainting them on a regular basis. As you mentioned, we have to formalize our goals for mode shift and determine what our performance metrics are going to be, and you can, you can measure those metrics in a lot of ways. So, you can look at system-wide multimodal performance, you could look at project-level indicators, you can, you could look for, at anything from the number of accessible, ADA accessible curbs cuts we add in a, in the five-year period, or to something less tangible, like just perceived walkability or perceived improved bike access. So, we, we're going to have to sit down and meet and figure out what makes the most sense for our city. Mode shift is a, is a challenging thing, to get people out of their cars and biking or on a bus or walking, and, but it's an admirable goal and something we should be striving towards. And one of the things that would help with that is something called network gap analysis. So, you know, the, the goal of complete streets is to balance the needs of all the users across an integrated multimodal networks. We want a holistic street network, one that connects critical locations for all the users. So, a network gap analysis basically looks at all of our existing accommodations for pedestrians, for bikes, for vehicles, for transit, and identify where the gaps of service are, and then we can focus on removing those gaps and making sure pedestrians can get from point A to point B, and so on. And the bike master plan we were talking about earlier is a piece of network gap analysis, and, yeah, so, that, you know, there's, all of those things need to be done so that we can truly have complete streets in Lowell.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other? Counsel Elliot.
Thank you. So, when do you anticipate establishing a mode shift goal or appropriate performance measures?
We're, we're going to probably have a meeting in the next month.
One of the first steps in order to achieve...
Yeah, so, really, that probably should have been done about the same time that we established the ordinance, which was in 2015, and then it was updated in 2016. So, and you, you measure your mode shift over a five-year period, so we really need to get that done very quickly so that we can then look at, you know, our goals for the next, basically, the next two years.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Counsel Conway.
Yeah, thank you. Throw you to the city manager. When we're talking about the, the sidewalk paintings, do we have, is there a plan for that? I mean, a, as far as the city is concerned, I know that there's been a lot of people talk about the crosswalks and the painting. Do we have a master plan for something like that?
For the, for the crosswalk paintings?
Right.
There is a plan. It typically goes section by section. Natasha can kind of address that.
Okay.
Yeah, so, the, the Sign Division of the Police Department tries to go neighborhood by neighborhood. Occasionally, when we have a situation where a, a crosswalk is particularly faded and, and there are complaints, we'll ask them to go specifically paint that crosswalk, but it's, it goes neighborhood by neighborhood, basically, around the city.
How many individuals are actually employed to, to help out with that?
It's my understanding that there are two employees and one, and one supervisor, so it's not a very big group.
Yeah, that, 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 I, I know a lot of people have, have talked about that and the safety...
Yes.
...issues, and, and also the fact that, you know, we have so many miles of streets and, and how, how long it would take to recycle around.
Yeah.
Also, the, the fact is that I've seen these crosswalks painted in, in front of the schools because, obviously, that's a priority, and within the, within that year, it, it's hard to see them.
Yes.
So, is there, do we have any kind of, of, is there a specific paint that can hold up better at this point?
So, with our, with the kind of winters that we have and all the plowing, typically, paint is only going to last one to maybe two years. If we have a, a new road, thermoplastic markings last a lot longer, but that's still in like the four to five-year range, and they're, and it's about twice as expensive, but the problem with the thermoplastic is that it doesn't stick to old roads as well as it does to new asphalt. So, it's, it's great when, so when we, so, for instance, Merrimack was just repaved, and all of those are thermoplastic lines and they're grooved, so they should last a really long time, but it is a problem.
And, and one quick question about the bikes. I just wanted to go back to that. The, is, is there some type of plan put into place that there'll be, and I think that Counsel Leahy alluded to it, the, the safety part of it? Because I'm, I'm saying to myself, I've seen, you know, bike paths in Chemsford, and, and you, you have to be, you have to be a special person to get through that.
Yeah.
I know, I wouldn't want to try to do it, but the other thing that, that bothers me too, or concerns, is the, the age of, of people using those bikes in the middle of the street. Is there, are there any restrictions? And the reason why I bring that up is because I know that when they put a program in, from what my, from what I have heard in New York City, fatalities actually increased by 20%. So, I'm saying, we don't want something like that to happen here. Is there a plan that we have to, to educate the, the bike? And also, is there some form of an age requirement?
You're referring to the bike share program?
Right.
Yeah, so, it's my understanding that you can't have an account with Vioride if you're under the age of 18 in, in order for, however, that, high school students can still use it, their parents can sign them up for it, there's a waiver, and they are supposed to wear helmets, like it's, and it's the law in Massachusetts. If you're under the age of 16, you have to wear a helmet if you're on a bike. There is supposed to be a sort of a, a public service announcement-style process when the bike share is rolled out to educate people on the rules of the road, where they can and can't ride their bikes, and, of course, about wearing helmets. The Vioride is going to partner with bike shops here in Lowell for discounts on helmets and things like that, so there, there definitely is a great deal of concern about the safety of riders.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Any further questions? Thank you. Will dock in the chambers? Thank you. Now, from the city clerk, Minutes of the Arts and Culture Subcommittee of September 25th, Finance Subcommittee, joint with the School Committee, Finance Subcommittee, September 25th. City council meeting September 25th. I need a motion to accept the place in file. By Counsel Elliot, second by Counsel Conway. Next, we go to communications from the city manager. Motion responses. The first is bicycle safety. Counsel Cirillo.
Hi, yes, thank you. It was a, it was a very good motion response. Could I please have, is Natasha Vance here to speak to it? Thank you so much. I see in the, I see in the motion response that during the open space and recreation plan, public participation process, citizens identified bicycles' master planning as a, as a priority. So, if you can just speak to what's in the report so that everyone watching can...
Sure.
Thank you so much.
Yeah. The motion was about the budgeted cost and implementation for bike safety, both painting and upkeep of bike lanes, or creating some separated bike lanes in the city. This is, of course, not an inexpensive process. We have about 14 miles of dedicated bike lanes and another 21 miles of sharrows in the city. In order to repaint those every year would be somewhere between $8,000 to $21,000. That sounds like a big range. It's, it depends on how frequently we put bike symbol markings on the ground. And then, in addition, there are some pretty complex markings on Father Morissette where we have green painting, and that isn't included in this cost. Generally speaking, people are more apt to use bike lanes if they're separated from traffic by a physical barrier. There are a number of ways you can do that. By, you can shift the parking lane over and, and paint some striping so that it's vehicle traffic, a parking lane, and then the bike lane. You can all, we can also install flexible posts that are bolted to the ground, and you typically put those in every 20 to 50 feet. And then, probably the most elaborate one would be to install curbing, two-sided curbing with maybe planters inside, which really creates a very visible barrier for vehicles. And the result of that is that we, it increases ridership. More people feel safe and comfortable, perhaps taking their children on a bike ride to getting them to school or to parks, but it is obviously not without expense. The expenses are listed in here on a, on a per-mile basis. The curbing installation is very expensive, and, you know, even, even just putting one single bike symbol down is, it's $4 per symbol, and if you put one every 50 feet, it can get expensive. The, the, the main takeaway, I think, from this motion response should be that we really need to have a bike master plan. One of the things that I hear frequently from residents who like to bike in the city is that our bike lanes go kind of from nowhere to nowhere, that they don't get you to a place you want to be, and a bike master plan would enable us to look at the places where we have gaps and places that would connect residents where they want to go, like parks or schools or downtown restaurants or their workplace. And, and we do want to create bike lanes that make people feel safe so that we do increase usage, because the more people who are biking, the less people who are driving, and that helps reduce congestion, and, of course, parking, which are two of our big issues in the city of Lowell.
Right. Are there any grants that we could pass that could possibly help mitigate the cost for the city in helping with producing some bike lanes?
Yes, there certainly are, and, and we're actively looking at what grants might, might potentially work. Complete streets is always a possibility, but, you know, we have, kind of have to figure out the priority in terms of how we want to apply for those grants.
Right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
This is a good report. Thank you.
Counsel Lee.
Thank you. I just had a quick question. So, in a, in a city like Lowell where the roads are narrow, how do you do bike lanes? Should we be trying to focus a little bit more on education versus...
Yeah, that's a great question. So, one of the big issues we have here is we do have narrow roads and narrow right-of-way, and really, I think, one of the, the best things to do is to not put bikes on those more narrow roads, is to find, and so, one of the, the, where most of our bike lanes are, are on some of the roads where we have a lot of right-of-way, so we could fit the bike lanes and the traffic. What we need to do is try to connect those up, and sometimes what's best is putting a bike lane on a parallel road as opposed to the main road that gets you from point A to point B. The, you know, in order, like, I'll probably talk about this in the complete streets motion response next, but we don't need a bike lane on, on every road in the city. We need them in places just that connect one to another, and probably not on the more narrow roads, because, again, people won't use them because they won't feel particularly safe.
No, that's a good point. I'm glad you said that, so, you know, go into depth on that. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Next, we have the complete street policy. Again, Counsel Cirillo.
Hi, yes. This was a very good report. Thank you. And if you could just review what's in the report in this report for the complete streets, and I did see that, and I, I like that the DPD will meet with the engineering and DPW with input from Mass DOT to establish a mode shift goal and the appropriate performance measures, which can include changes in any of the following, and it just, but I, I think that that's really wonderful, that you're, you're setting this, a mode shift goal, and, and to, to see which streets are, are safe for bicycles and, and different types of mode of transportation. So, please, thank you.
Sure. So, you know, just to kind of restate for people at home, our complete streets policy essentially means that we have a goal of transportation equity for multimodal transportation, so that would include pedestrian access, ADA accessibility, bicycle access, vehicular access, and transit. So, trying to make sure that everyone who lives in the city, no matter what mode of transit, transportation they typically use, they can get around. We've made some really good progress since we adopted the complete streets ordinance. DPD, Development Services, Engineering, and DPW, we look at, we consider complete streets design guidelines in every project that we're designing or reviewing, so we are always looking at pedestrian and ADA accessibility, bike accommodations, and we're including them where it's feasible and appropriate. Again, not on every single street and not in every project, but, but where it can happen. There are a couple of things we need to do to, to truly be in compliance with our commitment based on the ordinance.
...cuts we add in the five-year period or to something less tangible like just perceived walkability or perceived improved bike access. So, we're going to have to sit down and meet and figure out what makes the most sense for our city. Mode shift is a challenging thing to get people out of their cars and biking or on a bus or walking, but it's an admirable goal and something we should be striving towards. And one of the things that would help with that is something called network gap analysis. So, you know, the goal of complete streets is to balance the needs of all the users across an integrated multimodal networks. We want a holistic street network, one that connects critical locations for all the users. So, a network gap analysis basically looks at all of our existing accommodations for pedestrians, for bikes, for vehicles, for transit, and identify where the gaps of service are. And then we can focus on removing those gaps and making sure pedestrians can get from point A to point B and so on. And the bike master plan we were talking about earlier is a piece of network gap analysis. And, yeah, so, you know, there's all of those things need to be done so that we can truly have complete streets in Lowell.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other? Councilor Elliott?
Thank you. So, when do you anticipate establishing a mode shift goal or appropriate performance measures?
We're going to probably have a meeting in the next month.
One of the first steps in order to achieve...
Yeah, so, really, that probably should have been done about the same time that we established the ordinance, which was in 2015, and then it was updated in 2016. So, and you measure your mode shift over a five-year period. So, we really need to get that done very quickly so that we can then look at, you know, our goals for the next, basically the next two years.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Councilor Conway?
Yeah, thank you. Through you to the city manager. When we're talking about the sidewalk paintings, do we have, is there a plan for that? I mean, as far as the city is concerned, I know that there's been a lot of people talk about the crosswalks and the painting. Do we have a master plan for something like that?
For the crosswalk paintings?
Right.
There is a plan. It typically goes section by section. Natasha can address that.
Okay.
Yeah, so, the assigned division of the police department tries to go neighborhood by neighborhood. Occasionally, when we have a situation where a crosswalk is particularly faded and there are complaints, we'll ask them to go specifically paint that crosswalk. But it goes neighborhood by neighborhood, basically, around the city.
How many individuals are actually employed to help out with that?
It's my understanding that there are two employees and one supervisor. So, it's not a very big group.
Yeah, that, I know a lot of people have talked about that and the safety issues, and also the fact that, you know, we have so many miles of streets and how long it would take to recycle around. Also, the fact is that I've seen these crosswalks painted in front of the schools because obviously that's a priority. And within that year, it's hard to see them.
Yes.
So, is there, do we have any kind of, is there a specific paint that can hold up better at this point?
So, with the kind of winters that we have and all the plowing, typically, paint is only going to last one to maybe two years. If we have a new road, thermoplastic markings last a lot longer, but that's still in like the four to five-year range. And they're, and it's about twice as expensive. But the problem with the thermoplastic is that it doesn't stick to old roads as well as it does to new asphalt. So, it's great when, so when we, so, for instance, Merrimack was just repaved, and all of those are thermoplastic lines and their grooves, so they should last a really long time. But it is a problem.
And one quick question about the bikes. I just wanted to go back to that. The, is there some type of plan put into place that there'll be, and I think that Councilor Leahy alluded to it, the safety part of it? Because I'm saying to myself, I've seen, you know, bike paths in Jonesford, and you have to be, you have to be a special person to get through that.
Yeah.
I know I wouldn't want to try to do it. But the other thing that bothers me too or concerns is the age of people using those bikes in the middle of the street. Is there, are there any restrictions? And the reason why I bring that up is because I know that when they put a program in, from what I have heard in New York City, fatalities actually increased by 20%. So, I'm saying, we don't want something like that to happen here. Is there a plan that we have to educate the bike? And also, is there some form of an age requirement?
You're referring to the bike share program?
Right, right.
Yeah, so, it's my understanding that you can't have an account with Vioride if you're under the age of 18 in order for, however that, high school students can still use it, their parents can sign them up for it, there's a waiver, and they're supposed to wear helmets. Like, and it's the law in Massachusetts. If you're under the age of 16, you have to wear a helmet if you're on a bike. There is supposed to be a sort of a public service announcement-style process when the bike share is rolled out to educate people on the rules of the road, where they can and can't ride their bikes, and of course, about wearing helmets. The Vioride is going to partner with bike shops here in Lowell for discounts on helmets and things like that. So, there definitely is a great deal of concern about the safety of riders.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Any further questions? Thank you. Next is FEMA flood zone update. Councilor Serrano?
Yes. I'm really happy to see that the, there are going to be meetings that are held for the residents on next month at 6:30 on Wednesday, October 17th, and October 24th at Don Polsky Club located at 10 Coburn Street in Lowell. If the city manager could just review what's in the report. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I know Mark Young is here who prepared the report. This has to do with the repair that was done, that changes the configuration and the impact of FEMA regulations, especially in regard to a section that was adversely impacted for flood insurance purposes. Those individuals have been notified of these meetings where they can learn more about the FEMA process. And this, as I said, is something that Mark Young has been working on with the neighborhood and with FEMA. So, Mark, I don't know if you want to expand on that.
No, you did a good job. Hopefully, we'll be able to, the residents have an understanding of the FEMA process to update the maps, and they will get up-to-date information from FEMA on the schedule to do that. And of course, we're trying to push that to be done as soon as possible.
Right, right. So, maybe a guesstimate as to how soon the residents will have their papers in hand?
I think we'll find out more at these meetings.
Okay. All right. Fantastic. Thank you so much. Thank you for this.
Any further questions? Thank you. Next, we have double pole update. Councilor Leahy?
Thank you. Thank you for the report, Madam Mayor, Madam Manager. Could we just have, yeah, correct?
Christine Clancy, the city engineer, is here who prepared the report and has worked on this.
Yeah. Thank you. My, so, the report was pretty good. The one thing is the hanging wires, which kind of really are an eyesore. So, I understand the explanation, but it's really not acceptable. So, is there a plan to work with Verizon and Comcast to have them clip their wires? They just, you know, it seems to be a new trend hanging down, and it just doesn't work.
Right. So, we have been meeting with National Grid for both for gas and electric, and we've talked about the double poles, and that report addressed that a few years ago, we had 800 poles, and now we're down to 78, and that's about 1% of the, less than a percentage of the poles in the city. So, that's great. And then for the hanging wires, I think that's something that we can work closely with National Grid. But they would be the ultimate people to address the situation. We have had some complaints come in about low overhanging wires. So, the report addresses, there's different cases. There's low main wires that they're observed to be hanging and impeding pedestrian or vehicular traffic. That's something. In other cases, there's service wires down. And then I think a third case was sometimes you see an excess amount of wires looped, like in loops at a pole. And that's there. So, we did talk about that in a recent meeting with National Grid, and that's there because there's sometimes different service providers for the same house. So, for example, if you have Comcast, then you want to switch to FiOS, you have the ability to switch out those cables. They should be secured to the pole. So, I think, I mean, we're, right now, it's we're kind of in a reactive state where if people, if complaints come in, we forward that to Verizon, and people can reach out to Verizon and National Grid themselves. But I think we just got this list of double poles. We're coordinating. So, I think we, we're meeting frequently with National Grid, so we can continue just to make that an item to discuss.
Okay. I mean, that's, I understand the poles and everything. That's fine. But I know people can't touch other people's wires, you know? Verizon doesn't want to touch. So, but the thing that's unacceptable is, I don't care if someone switches from Verizon to cable to Comcast for their phone, then Verizon should take their wire off the pole. They shouldn't leave them hanging. They're leaving them hanging. They'd get uncoiled, and they're just hanging. And there's been street, there's been a pole in front of your house, there's poles all over the city that the wires are just hanging there. And someday, someone's going to think it's a cable wire, and it's going to be an electrical wire. But, so, I would, and we had a motion before you got here to find them if they're hanging, but it seemed like it wouldn't take us any closer to our resolution here. But I think that's something we need to work with Verizon and Comcast and tell them if someone switches, you know, most likely, they're not going to switch in a year. So, cut the wires, take them away, and if five years from now, they switch back to Verizon or whatever, they can hook a new wire up. So, it's just unacceptable. Have you seen them hanging down?
I have seen some. I think so to answer, I think, your comment is those should be secured. So, I think the preference is that National Grid, Verizon, or Comcast like to leave those wires there just in case someone switches. But they should be secured, and that's the loop, you know, they're looped, secured above where anyone can reach it. So, in talking to National Grid, Verizon, and Comcast, I guess that is an unacceptable case where it's switched out and then it's left hanging. In the meeting with National Grid, Comcast, and Verizon, they said, if you see that, let us know. And so, I think we can, we can work closely with them to identify some of these locations and meet with them frequently.
Yeah, you know what I mean? It's another thing that it's not up to the nine of us to keep calling these in. It's, they're driving around all day working on these poles. They should be tying them up and securing them and not waiting for one of us to call. So, just if we just keep hammering away on this, it would be appreciated. That's what we need to do.
Sure. We'll make it a point in our meeting with National Grid.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilor Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Did you say we're down to 78 double poles?
78 double poles. We were at 800 several years ago. And so, the reason why also, and it was in the letter, why we have double poles, we always will have double poles in the city. Because you have double poles when you're upgrading infrastructure, when, or when there's an instance when it's knocked down, whether it be if there's a structural reason to re-secure that pole, or if it was knocked down in an emergency. So, there's always going to be an instance where there's double poles, but the goal is to keep that move, a double pole shouldn't be a double pole for eternity or for long duration. So, so, there is a database in the memo that the Comcast, National Grid, and Verizon have a database to help manage how wires are moved between poles. And so, that's a significant change from 800 down to 78. So, we're less than a percent of all the poles in the city being double.
Have you been having meetings with them about double poles?
We've been having meetings weekly with National Grid in some cases, both with electric and gas. And each week, it's a different, or we add agenda topics. So, recently, we've been talking about double poles.
And so, when you had that conversation with them, did they indicate that they would be able to get below 78?
I think it's more that that, there's a list of 78 right now, and so, they're going to continue to move wires off of that pole. I guess, you know, there's no, the goal is, it depends on what the need is. If there's an infrastructure upgrade, you're going to have more double poles for that process. So, right now, I mean, 78 for this area is a very, they've reported was a low number. But right now, if there's no major infrastructure improvements, if there's no emergencies, then that number will probably drop.
But I guess what I'm asking is, did they indicate that they thought that they could get below the 78 in your discussion with them regarding the double poles?
As of right now, I think they can continue to get below 78. But they, I mean, they recognize that as a, as a low percentage right now. So, we didn't talk about specific numbers or what a goal is. They recognize that as a low volume of double poles in the city. Does that, I guess, it depends on what the, if there's an emergency, that changes the number. If there's infrastructure upgrades. So, I think it's, they recognize it as a low number. Could potentially drop, it could increase depending on, you know, the scenarios.
Yeah. I guess the way I look at it is 78 is a lot better than 800, but it's not as good as zero. And so, I just wondered whether or not they thought they could get lower, maybe not to zero, but to a number below that, or whether or not, or whether they're just proud that they're at 78.
I mean, so, the database is also set up so that if there's a double pole in front of your house, you don't want a double pole in front of your house for a significant amount of time. So, if there's a double pole, this new database is set up so that people should be notified so they can move poles. So, that double pole should be, shouldn't be a double pole as long as it maybe previously had been when this database was set up. So, I guess the goal is that when double poles are put up, that this is really a process to move the utilities, not to really have it be known as a double utility pole.
Did they indicate what they thought was an acceptable time for having a double pole?
They did. It really depends on the type of why, we talked briefly about that, what's on the pole. Sometimes there's, you have the street light, you have, you have the electric, the street light, the fiber. So, it really depends what's on that pole. We didn't get into the exact details, but it's the, you want to have someone notified, and then the next person looking to move to the utilities and just have it be a moving process.
Okay. Thanks.
Councilor Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And speaking about double poles, speaking about hanging wires, I'm not a fan of the customer service safety tip information that I got last winter during one of the storms when I had a wire down hanging across my driveway. And I called up National Grid, and the person on the phone said, "Go out there and just move it out of the way." I said, "Well, evidently, she was not a fan of mine, knew who I was," or whatever. But there was no way I was going out. And I never learned safety with wires. I think my family told me, "Don't touch it." So...
Yeah, I guess that's a good point, because I think when people call, "What wire is it?" And I would recommend to always treat a wire as an active wire. You don't know if it's abandoned. And if it's a live wire, you don't know if it's electric, if it's a cable. So, any hanging wire, I would treat it as live and really reach out to police and fire first. And then they can maybe look at it to see who to notify. That's my recommendation.
I thought it was a conspiracy myself, that I didn't touch it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Thank you. Next, we have Clemente Field. Councilor Noon. Sam Maris, Councilor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the managers, I thought the report was a start. I do encourage, though, and the report indicated that there will be an ongoing meeting between the DPWs and DPD and the Clemente group. I encourage the DPWs and DPD to meet with the Clemente baseball group, I mean, or to communicate this report to them. Also, a question I have is to maybe the managers or Commissioner Donson with regard to this report. Is there a grant somewhere that we can look to address the cost associated with this, the light?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the council. So, there are grant opportunities that we're exploring. I think what is referenced is CDBG money, but up to $50,000 for planning purposes. In terms of other potential grants, we can explore some of the existing grants, park grants, and determine whether there's eligibility, and also seek on occasion, depending on the state budget earmarks, to try and help supplement this money as well in a shorter-term process.
I think, you know, for me, the immediate, the immediate need for this park, really, I know that it's winter approaching, maybe next summer, the lighting, you know, the rest, it may not be that essential. You know, the concession stand and stuff like that. If possible, the group can work with the city or the group themselves raise the money to do this. But I think the light is of importance to them. This summer is almost gone, so maybe next summer. I do encourage through you to the department head to meet with the group and just to communicate the report to them so that they know that the city and through you, with you as leaders have, take step to, you know, try to look for a way to help in this area.
And we will arrange a meeting with the, with the baseball group out at Clemente.
Thank you, Madam Manager.
Thank you, Councilor.
Councilor Elliott?
Yeah, I think that'd be helpful, because Saturday, there was actually a meeting on Weber Street with some contractors and representatives from the Clemente Park to discuss and plan for the concession stand so they'll be able to raise money to partner with this. So, they are in full planning gear and ready to proceed, I presume, in the spring to do that. So, the timing will be good. Great. We will do that.
Any other discussion? I also, you know, as part of that motion, Madam Manager, and, you know, the report looked like, you know, it'll be several years before we can do that. But I think with the possibility of putting fundraising together and other ways of raising funds, it's worth, you know, being looked into at this particular point.
Definitely.
Thank you. All set? All right. Next, Jackson Street Trash Barrels. Councilor Serrano?
Hi, yes. Thank you. Thank you for the report. I would like to have Gunther come and speak to what's in the report. And also, I liked to see that the DPW is exploring separating out the collection of public space receptacles from the overall contract and bidding this component separately. I think that that might, might help an awful lot. So, Gunther?
Thank you.
So, I did prepare a presentation because we have three motion replies in front of you. The presentation does not include components on discussion, which we hope to do in subcommittee, on the senior cart, the pricing and the inventory, nor the item that we had to change in the ordinance for those who've received violations and go before the municipal hearing officer, and also about the cart set out and taking them in after collection. So, those three items are not part of my presentation. And specifically to your, to your question about the contract, it's about three months away, and so, we are still in negotiation. Other vendors have approached us to see if there are pieces that we could peel off and give to them and maybe find some savings.
Yeah. What's wonderful is that the trash barrels are being used so that they're overflowing. So, to be able to have this, this opportunity to possibly break out the contracts will be wonderful, because it's great that people are throwing their trash in the bins.
We would certainly prefer to have the litter in a barrel than on the ground. But sometimes, if you add barrels too dense, meaning they're too close together, one, it causes additional service issues. But sometimes, you're just inviting trash from the neighbors. We have seen that often also. So, we want to be very careful about putting barrels out just for putting them, you know, for the sake of putting them out. We do try to measure the distance from one to the next and try to keep an appropriate density. So, yes, it's good that they're using it, but I'm actually trying to move to carry in, carry out in some places, so we don't have the burden of services in disposal.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilor Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What's, what is an appropriate density?
It depends on the neighborhood. When we had the Bridge Street corridor reconstruction...
Let's take Jackson Street. Let's take that, that segment of Jackson Street that we're talking about.
Okay. So, from Central to the Judicial Center, there are five barrels. Some belong to Community Health Center, and some belong to us. And so, it's, you really can't run a measuring tape, because then you could be between blocks or in the middle of a crosswalk. So, we try to alternate on sides. So, one on this side, go up a block, one on that side. So, it depends on the configuration of the neighborhood. So, that particular stretch has five barrels.
So, what would that, would that be like one every 200 feet or something like that? Or is it...
I can check the GPS. It's based on the length of the block. So, we're just about at every change of block.
Okay. I, I'm not asking that you go take a look at the GPS. I just wondered if it was, I just figured you could estimate whether or not.
So, after the counselor's motion, we did add two, and I think that's been satisfactory in terms of maintaining them. We want to collect them, but we don't want to go every day when they're empty or quarter-full. So, those are Monday, Wednesday, and Friday.
And do we have the same density on Central and Merrimack and Market Street?
It depends on what kind of commercial entities are there also. So...
So, if you're near restaurants, it'd be, they'd be denser? Is that what you mean?
Restaurants and markets and convenience stores. On Bridge Street, from First Street Boulevard up to Sixth, we had eight barrels. So, it does depend on the type of use of that area also.
And how often do we empty those barrels?
So, there are 250 downtown barrels and 450 citywide in public spaces. Most of them are Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, and then the other complement are Tuesdays and Thursdays. And certainly, if we get a report that one has been filled, then we'll send the truck back.
So, the downtown barrels, the central business district barrels?
Monday, Wednesday, and Friday.
Monday, Wednesday, Friday?
Mm-hmm.
And then the other barrels, most of which are probably in parks and so forth, those are...
Yeah, smaller parks, smaller playgrounds with picnic tables. Those would be on Tuesdays and Thursdays.
Okay. And whoever empties those barrels, if they were to tell you that the barrel is overflowing, then, then you would make a...
Very often, the Parks Department will notify me first, because they're mowing, and they're picking up, and they're moving equipment. So, I'll get a call from our staff first to say that something is overflowing. Could we add a third barrel to one that only has two?
And who notifies you for downtown, for the central business district?
Could be the others. Usually, it's the downtown Parks Department crew that operates the vacuum truck. They're there just about every day, making sure that the sidewalks and the curb edges are vacuumed. So, I'll get calls from them.
Okay. So, they monitor it on a regular basis?
Yeah.
What about the vacuum truck? Just to go up, but you brought it up. How often does that do the sidewalks?
Perhaps the commissioner, do you know when the, what the schedule is?
I don't know the specific schedule. I know it's always Monday to Friday, and Saturdays, it's out there.
So, it's six days a week, every day?
Yes. That's correct.
And in the morning generally?
It's doing it the whole day. They start their shift at 7:00, and they run to about 3:00.
Okay. And what is their, what is their district? What do they cover?
Oh, the entire downtown area from Market Street to Jackson Street to Central to Merrimack.
Well, I mean, do they go up Merrimack past the library, past, up to, say, Cabbie Street, for instance?
I will have to double-check on that. I'm not exactly sure of their limits of where they do.
Okay.
Yeah. And I can get back to you.
Yeah. I'd like to know that. I don't need a report at the next meeting or anything. I just would like to know, know how it is.
Okay. Yeah, we have a map that's very specific as far as their region that they take care of. There's two individuals. They park at one of the parking garages, and they each have their own route, and they're responsible for it.
Okay. Who cleans the garages, by the way? Who does that?
I do not know.
I think it's the management company. I believe it's part of the management company's contract as far as cleaning the garage.
Okay. And do we ever monitor that? I mean, we've gotten reports periodically that the Market Street Garage, for instance, ends, is, has a lot of litter, particularly in the stairwells, but in other places. And so, who, does anybody monitor that for us to make sure that they, that company is doing what they're supposed to be doing for those garages?
Yeah. I think the parking director is in charge of making sure the contracts, that the contractor's doing what they're supposed to do.
Okay. Thank you.
But we'll check with a former parking director, but who's still in the employ of the city.
Right. Okay. Thanks.
Councilor Elliott?
Just real quickly, are there plans to put barrels on Branch Street in that business corridor? I know I had filed the motion quite some time ago.
Not, not currently on my desk, but we could certainly talk about specific locations.
You know, it's one of these things. We don't want to continue... You know, it's one of these things, we don't want to continue to empty trash, but, you know, otherwise, I think you mentioned it, it ends up on the ground, so. And this was a number of months ago, it wasn't-
Yeah, we'll look into that.
I just think it's important if we want people to keep, and they're taking pride in that area, and we've had meetings, so if we could just look into it. You know, the proprietors, they're putting out their own barrels, and so, in any event. Thank you. I think this is good, I think this is a good report. It does show, and one of the constant complaints we've heard throughout the years is the downtown is messy. And I remember the time when the barrels were pulled out and people were upset and trash, people need a place to put their trash. I tell you, you know, Gunther, we recycle thousands of plastic water bottles at the soccer field every weekend, but we pay somebody to empty the trash barrels and put it in the dumpster that the city provides, so. And it's important if we don't, there's 2,000 people there and if there's no barrels, unfortunately, it ends up on the field. So I'm a little concerned about the carry-in, carry-out. I know that's been discussed in the past, but I guess, is there a pilot program that you're looking at?
The Commissioner and I have mentioned it on the Veterans Park in Belvedere that's being planned. Right now, there's a bench and no barrel. And as that Veterans Park gets developed, we would just keep it a bench and a sign that says "Carry In, Carry Out." It wouldn't be in a large-
Oh, it's not an athletic field or something like that?
No, it's not that kind of facility. It's a small, you know-
Okay, that warrants another discussion, but I'm glad that we're moving forward.
Madam Manager?
Thank you. And one of the things we are closely looking at is, as has been mentioned here, is whether we should have two different contracts for collecting trash because sometimes when the waste hauler is under pressure, then public spaces may not be tended to first. So we're trying to weigh the pros and cons of having two separate ones and maybe more efficient for picking up the public space, and whether the amount of pickups are sufficient right now.
Counselor Kennedy, then Counselor Leahy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Elliott's comments make me wonder whether or not we have barrels in every local business district. I mean, do we have them in Couples Square? Do we have them on Bridge Street? Do we have them in any of the central, the local business districts in the neighborhoods? I gotta think that if we don't have them on Branch Street right now, that maybe we don't have them anywhere. But it might not be a bad idea if we had them in all of those districts. Some of them are more vibrant than others, but there are several that I would think where they could be used and would just help keep the area clean. So can we find out about that?
Yeah, we can, we'll get your report.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Leahy?
Thank you. Just since we brought up the vacuums, I just want to say that I think those guys, I see them downtown, you know, six days a week at least, and they do a great job. And it's good that we can call, if they get caught up, they can go up a little further on whatever route they are. They go further up Merrimack Street or Jackson Street or wherever. So I think it's been working out well, so, and they do a great job. Thanks.
Counselor Noon?
Thank you, Mayor. We do have Counselor Kennedy in Couples Square. We have a couple barrel over there, but we don't have in Branch Street. Maybe a couple there would be good. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Madam Manager?
And Gunther does have a presentation for the council, which is in response. Let me just address G, Senior Discount on Trash Barrels. That had previously been sent to a subcommittee to look at the potential changes to the ordinance, but there is a description that I'd ask for that report to go as well to the subcommittee.
Yes, regarding that, because I think that was mine, the senior discount. So I thought the report was good. I do think that we need to change that ordinance, but I also would concur with the report, which is recommending that we do that around the time that we do the new trash contract, which would be at the end of the year. That makes sense to me, so I think that's a good idea to do that.
And then under H, Mr. Mayor, that the presentation, I think, gives a more full explanation on the response.
Counselor Miller-Lazlo, if you want.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I certainly appreciate the information, and I look forward to the presentation, and if we all have comments or questions after, we can do it at that time. So, thank you.
Madam Manager?
I guess I'd turn it over to Gunther for his presentation.
Okay. Thank you very much for the opportunity. It's been a while that we've had, I would call it trash issues, but contamination issues. Here briefly is a map of the city. The city engineer talked about the number of road miles. Just quickly, some metrics, jumping too far ahead. Apologize for that, looks like a technical difficulty here. All right, so the city has 25,000 eligible households, 25,000 trash carts, and of course, the mate or the pair to that, so 25,000 recycling carts. So we maintain and we repair upon request at no cost to the resident, 50,000 pieces of inventory. Every day, every business day, Waste Management, our contractor, services 5,000 trash carts. Last year, that amounted to 23,500 tons of material that we had to dispose of. And then the complement to that, on a blue-green schedule, every day, 2,500 single-stream recycling carts, and that's the body of today's discussion. Last year, we produced 6,500 tons of single-stream recycling. And as we've mentioned, there are public space barrels, and also the Solid Waste and Recycling Office manages 50 dumpsters at municipal buildings and public schools. The primary concern in our next budget is the issue of contamination. I think I've presented before on plastic bags and other things that get into the recycling that we consider contamination, but here's a few samples. I think you saw it in one of the motion replies. Wood, yard waste, trash bags, moored leaves, toys, I mean, the list goes on and on. We are in the middle of an intensive outreach and education and enforcement period, so we'll be talking about that in just a second. The things that are problems, as I mentioned on the top row, are the plastic bags, the film-plastic dry cleaner bags, bread bags, trash bags, but also folks putting material into the bags. They may collect a whole week's worth of bottles and cans and put that bag in, that won't get emptied, that just passes through the system and becomes residue, it becomes a contaminant in the system. And then in the middle rows, we have yuck, that's food, and it's yard waste, and it's medical waste, and clothing. We've provided 13 bins at elementary schools in the city, very successful program, fundraiser for them, for your used textiles. And in the bottom row, these two are really important, tanglers, extension cords, garden hoses, Christmas trees, lights, chains, gets into the equipment and is dangerous to the employees, and then wood and propane tanks and hazardous waste. So these six are the primary things that we are issuing citations against. Very quickly, we had Waste Management pull one of our trucks off the route. It was a Friday Blue route, and they disassembled it, manually went through the material, and found that a third of that truck, imagine, a third of our material going to the recycling plant, being those items from that category of six. It gets very expensive for them to separate it out and dangerous for their employees, and now they're starting to come back to us to say, "What are you doing?" To get it out. So that's what we're discussing in this presentation. The first hints of contamination came to us in the summer of 2015, where the residue in that truck was so high that they just outright rejected the whole truck of recyclables. Again, those six contaminant categories. Some actions for us were immediate actions to reduce the level of contaminants. We've been doing mailings, we've been doing inserts, newsletters, the app is helping with that. And then the bottom line that's covered up says, unfortunately, the city will incur future charges to separate that material. This graph was included in the motion reply. Since the beginning of the year, we've had staff doing inspections. In May, we hired a new inspector, so we got a jump. In July, we hired a second inspector, got another bump, and the Mass DEP grant gave us another part-time inspector. If you put that all together, we've done 5,000 cart inspections. Trash, recycling, bulky items, carts left out too late. So I think we're working hard at being on the street and making a difference. And then the last note here, those two months, you should have received in the mail postcards. With the Mass DEP grant, we mailed 41,000 postcards, this one that's on the screen, in June. The topics that I wanted to bring up is bottles and cans, it's not scrap metal and pots and pans, it's food and beverage. The, did I get, turned it off? Is there an on button? Ah, there we go, the other button. Glass, this is not mirrors and picture frames, this is food and beverage glass. In the paper, it's shipping boxes, and Amazon and UPS are bringing a lot of cardboard to the residential, recycling, which we've never had before, but we don't want the styrofoam, the packing peanuts, the shrink wrap. And then in the rigid plastics is food and beverage. This isn't milk crates and five-gallon buckets, all of those would be considered contaminants. The second postcard, about three and a half weeks later, again, to 41,000 households paid for by our grant in the Department of Environmental Protection, was a reminder that we don't want plastic bags loose or plastic bags full. I can tell you anecdotally that the backside of this postcard had an invitation to join the app, download the free app, and we did get a bump each postcard mailing, gained a couple hundred additional users on the app. And the motion in question came to us on August 27th, said, "Okay, where do we stand in terms of outreach, education?" You saw the postcards. We trained staff, we purchased new citation books, and we started issuing citations for the improper disposal of recyclables or recycling carts that had excessive amount of contamination. And then a month later, here we are, just finishing up September. So far, our staff has issued 225 tickets, citations, that go through code enforcement and are actually attached to the parcel, the owner of record. And in addition to that, there were still many carts that received outreach, door hangers, warnings, and were even rejected from collection. This brings us to the discussion on the new contract. It's a very expensive contract, in the current stage is about $5.5 million. What we're looking at are, still in discussion, still some rough numbers, a five-year contract. The baseline, this is only for the recycling collection. We're not talking about curbside and bins and dumpsters, I should say, litter barrels, just for recycling, the baseline in year one is over $350,000. But you can see that that is marked at 10% contamination. We're not at 10%. We're not at 20%. We're at 30%. So unfortunately, the premium that they're going to charge is about $200,000, almost $300,000 to manage that excessive amount of contamination. So the new contract is a baseline plus this contamination index. So the recycling component alone is going to be 600, almost $700,000 more if we do nothing, don't work towards improving the contamination. So what are my goals every year with the staff and the resources and education and the changes to the ordinances? If we can come down 5%, then we'll whittle away towards that contamination index and bring us just to the baseline. Maybe in year five, we are discussing a 10-year option with the same vendor, so we could spread it out over a few years, but we are working towards that, hopefully, reality of getting it to the 10%. So that is the end of the presentation.
Counselor Miller-Lazlo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Gunther, very much for the presentation. There's certainly a lot of information. I know the last part of the report talks about some proposed ordinances that you'd like to have us consider through subcommittee. Is that the environmental subcommittee, or would it be the-
I believe it was already sent to a subcommittee a few weeks back, and it was environment-
Okay.
Environmental. Yes, it was sent to environmental.
Okay, thank you. Overall, as you look at the presentation, you look at the contamination issue relative to the recycle, and I can say, we've personally, my immediate family had personal interaction with the, one of the inspectors out on the street, and they were very polite and they were very nice, but clearly Gunther has ramped that up over the last few months. And we've all gotten calls from people on various other issues relative to trash, be it the barrels are being left out all week and so forth, and I know that Gunther and his small team is actually looking at, working on that as well. But again, I'm concerned, as we all are, with what's going on with the recycling and the fact that, I think there was a 60-minute piece on recycling and that China has stopped taking the plastics from the United States. So what does that mean for us, even as a small community? And if we're talking about a five-year contract with one five-year option to bring us out 10 years, I mean, that's something that I think we should all strive for, to try to lock in some of those costs. But I think overall, we're a city of, what, 13 and a half square miles? I mean, it's a big city with 25,000, as Gunther indicated, people that put out trash each and every day. But we're doing a better job on violations, on fines and so forth, and I look forward to the report from the environmental subcommittee relative to the proposed ordinances. Again, in their current form, I have a couple of questions and concerns, but I think overall, we're starting to head in the right direction, especially with the timing of the contract that, as was stated, ends this calendar year. So thank you for the report and presentation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I have Leahy, Kennedy, Elliott, and Conway. Counselor Leahy?
Thank you. My question to you, Gunther, is, so does the contractor have any solutions for the, you know, how to cut down on the contaminants?
So they've offered some assistance, some, maybe call it a grant, where they are providing stickers to the drivers, so they're doing some of their own rejections. We do have, call it, an education environmental fund built into the current contract, where there are $4,000 to $5,000 that will pay for stickers and mailing. So they are on the financial side assisting in stretching what we can do with the city dollars.
How does the driver know it's contaminated before he dumps it in?
So usually if it's one cart at one house, it might be too late. They do have cameras, so they do, it's a color monitor in the cab, so they can see it, and they'll get out and put a sticker on it saying, you know, "Please keep the following items out." Usually at a two-family where they're sort of equally contaminated, if he tips the first one and sees what falls into the hopper, then he'll get out and physically look at the second one. So we do find them accidentally.
Do any communities, do they have clear bins that would hold up that-
I haven't seen, I haven't seen that.
Clear, maybe people wouldn't throw them in. And how much would it be to change out all the barrels to clear type barrels?
When we went to automated trash, we amortized over five years about $1,002,000 for the trash cans, and five years later, about $1,001,000 for the 25,000 recycling carts. So they're in large volume, our volume, they're $1 million.
All right, so that doesn't really work, right? It's cheaper to pay the fine than it is to change the barrels out, but that doesn't help us, it's already in the truck, so. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Gunther, for all of the, for everything that we throw away, so the trash and the recycles, what percentage is, do we recycle? What is our percentage?
So the city's current recycling rate is in the mid-20%. So when we separate all of the categories, that Waste Management collects trash, goes to the incinerator, yard waste goes to composting, the component that goes to recycling is about 23%.
Okay. So how does that compare to other cities? For instance, I've always heard that Worcester is the best in the Commonwealth. And so what, and somebody told me one time that they do 55%, which is considerably better than us. Is that true? that they do 55%, which is considerably better than us. Is that true? Are they the best?
I can check the most recent numbers, but approximately, that is correct. A couple of features that make them stand out, one is their DPW still does the collection. So there's an inherent self-policing at each stop, whereas a subcontractor is just picking up the material. And the primary component that makes them different is that they're a true pay-as-you-throw, you have to put out their yellow bag for the first amount of trash. So in Lowell, you have a 68-gallon cart that's sort of built into your fee, and for the first 68 gallons, you can mix it all in and don't have to recycle. So when you pay for the first bag, there's a bigger incentive to set out the recyclables and keep the yard waste out. So certainly something that we can consider, you know, years out if we want to, you know, look at an environmental plan. But that would mean, you know, retiring the trash carts...
Right.
And go straight to a purple bag system.
Have you given any thought to whether or not there might be, we might be able to do something like that or provide some sort of incentive without having to redo all of ours?
So two options, Counselor. One of them is the option to use the purple bags inside the carts, so all the trash you would pay for, pretty much, I don't say eliminate, but reduce the upfront trash, the annual charge, trash fee, and move everything to a purple bag. So you have that incentive to save. We would still use the trash carts, but the purple bags would go inside the carts, and the vendor would monitor that. The towns that do that have a higher recycling rate.
Okay. What do we pay for a ton of trash?
We're at $80 on the scale.
And what do we pay for a ton of recyclables?
In the current contract, it's zero, but we're looking at about $40 a ton in the next contract.
And what do we think the trash will go to?
Every year, we have a $2 per ton escalator, so $82 a ton.
Okay. So instead of being, wow, so that's going to make it be that, that's going to mean recyclables is going to cost a lot more money than what they...
That's the baseline of $300,000.
Okay. And how do you determine that we're at 30% now? Who's saying that, the contractor?
So every month and at the end of the year, I get a summary of the tonnage, and we break out all of the recyclables that they set to the market and all the trash that was to the incinerator. And we're at about 23%.
No, I'm sorry, you misunderstood, or maybe I didn't say it correctly. The contaminants?
The contaminants.
That we're at 30%?
Yes.
All right. Who determined that we're at 30%?
On that particular study, they hired a third party through our grant, and they sat next to the vendor at the sorting facility. And they took apart all the bags and manually put it into pails and measured it with a third-party oversight.
Okay. And you mentioned that your goal would be to come down 5% per year, every year.
It's a goal. It's a huge goal because there are, every day, 5,000 trash customers, and we have two inspectors.
Okay. And so how would that be determined? That we need a third party again to come in and decide?
So the current contract allows for semi-annual inspections, and if we feel like we're moving the needle, they'll offer quarterly inspections.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Elliott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we kind of knew this was going to happen, in my opinion, a number of years ago regarding the contamination. My thought is, and I think that we need to continue to look into it, if we want people to take some of the material or, well, seemingly the recycling bins are being used as trash receptacles now when people's bins are being full. But, and we had the discussion years ago when we adopted this, we need to give people a place to go and bring some of the, whether it's scrap metal, which I'm looking at the pictures, that's ending up in the recycling, scrap metal, wood, plastic toys. So I do think that we need to look into, and I've visited a number of transfer stations, and they have separate dumpsters just for that, that allows the residents to go and dump. So I think that we need to take a look at it, and maybe there might be a cost associated with it. But considering the cost of $300,000 plus, A, it's not being recycled, and B, it's just, I just think that's going to increase, in my opinion. You know, I think Gunther mentioned, there are propane tanks that are ending up in our receptacles, and I think that's just, people are storing or holding things that, you know, and I think it's just accumulating over the years. So I know that was, we talked about it a while ago, is, is that back on the radar screen, or should we look at putting some dumpsters? And again, it's just, if you look at other transfer stations, it's for scrap metal, or there's one for wood, or there's one for, you know, rubber or appliances. And in some cases, they have to pay for it, which they have to pay for furniture, couches, things like that now.
Gunther, I don't know if you want to address that. We talked about, you know, a number of things in terms of how do you address this growing issue. Obviously, a transfer station would be an expense that would be incurred, and then it would have to be monitored so that others, you know, contractors and so forth aren't filling up things with waste that they otherwise have to pay for. So...
I don't think that we should be setting up a transfer station. I just think that even at, I know at DPW, you do have, I've seen dumpsters if people want to go and recycle if they're in condos.
Yep. So we do have a cardboard dumpster and a single-stream dumpster that are open during business hours.
Right. Does it make sense to look into some of the contaminants that people, I think people would likely go and drop things off of metal or things like that, that, who knows where they can end up?
So you might remember, a few years ago, we attempted something similar on Warren, behind the parking garage, where in the previous five-year contract, we had it priced out that there would be containers for a variety of drop-offs, even if they were for a fee, electronics and scrap metal. And that, call it a test project, didn't work out very well. So instead, we now have a monthly, difficult-to-manage material drop-off at DPW. My staff does some time swap to be there for residents. It's called our CHARM Center for Hard-to-Rycle Material, and we take light bulbs and batteries, and maybe that kind of operation could be expanded to have a metal container or a wood container for a fee. But it wouldn't be a construction and demolition yard where we would take sheet rock and shingles. And let's see what kind of material we can add to our Saturday events.
Yeah, no, and I agree. I think the manager's right. I think it's a growing problem. But on the other hand, you know, I agree with Councilor Millen. As a, we, before we went to the system, we were getting the mounds of trash throughout the city. You're probably City Council Madam Manager, where it was coming in from the towns, and we knew it. So I think we've made great strides, and we have ways to go. And we were going to, we held off for a number of years on the citations, but people do know, they know the rules now, and they know that the recycling bin shouldn't be as trash receptacles, and they should, you know, they should be buying the purple bags. Are they still available everywhere in all the supermarkets that people know?
Yep, 11 sites carry the bags. And what's great is that the store does not get a markup. It's a straight pass-through to the city. So it's a convenience, and it's a foot-traffic item for the stores. And you mentioned, sort of way back when, in 2008, when we implemented the automated trash system, the city was collecting 45,000 tons of trash. Now, having gone to automated trash and automated recycling, we're at 23,000 tons. So it has made a huge difference.
No, it has. I agree. And you just see, it is cleanly, it's neater, and people appreciate it. I just think when it comes to some of these contaminants, if people know there's a place that they can go, they'll bring it rather than end up in the solid ways. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Gunther, thank you for the report. It's rather alarming when you're talking about 30% contaminants. And needless to say, it's a major problem. I think that some of the things that just came up here, and Counselor Elliott mentioned the possibility of transfer stations, and I know the city manager and a team have taken a look at that. That quite often is used in the towns, and I think that it can be very effective. And I think it's something, and I understand it can be costly, but in the long run, it actually might save us some money. There's certain areas that I don't know if companies themselves would be interested in these transfer stations, like what was mentioned, is scrap metal. I mean, obviously, there's money involved with that. And I think that, I would assume that there's a lot of scrap metal in some form that is thrown out illegally. And, you know, that might be, can we entice a company to come in that deals specifically with that? The other thing that pops into my head, too, is the fact that most people, and I realize that you're trying to educate the city of Lowell, however, I think that most people, to be quite frankly, they don't pay attention. And I'm wondering if it would make any sense, if you take a look at the recycling bin now and you look on the top, you see a half a dozen things that you really have to look at very carefully. Now, if you tested people and said, "What can you put in there? What can't you put in there?" I would, I'd be willing to bet that the majority of the people would not know. Now, if, when I put my trash barrels out and I also put out yard waste, there's a big sign that says yard waste. There's no doubt what has to go into that, into that bin. Now, I'm wondering, would it make any sense that if there were stickers that were made up, that could be put on those recycling barrels, that it would be a reminder to people every single time they went out there? Because again, I don't know if everyone could really, I'm sure there's a lot of illegal stuff that's being dumped, don't get me wrong. But I would also think that there are things that are put into those barrels that people think it's all right to put in. I've been putting plastic bags in all the time. I thought I was doing a great job by putting them in. Then I find out that you shouldn't put them in because it causes a problem with the equipment. So...
The ticket box.
Actually, I blame that on my wife. She's the one that did it.
Oh, my God. Jeez, I doubt it.
So anyway, I think that it might not be a bad idea to take a look and see if we can, if we can come up with stickers that, and again, I don't know how we would distribute them, but it might make some sense. Does that make any sense to you, or is that...
So your comment is 100% on. We are using some of the Mass D E P funds to create an eight-and-a-half-by-11 adhesive-colored, weather-fast sticker. So at each recycling cart that ends up with the citation, we will actually put the adhesive with colored photos so that that particular cart will be labeled and that particular person will be educated.
But is there a way that we can be proactive in that? Is that possible?
So the inspectors will have them with them, and certainly if somebody asks for them. With 25,000 carts, the stickers are $1.50 apiece. It's going to add up. But right now, we're planning to put them on the carts that, where the citations are issued.
Because I would think that once you put those on, they're going to last quite a while. I mean, I would assume so. I mean, I take a look at those stickers that are put on the yard waste, they've been there for, I don't know, 10 years or 12 years, and you still know what you're supposed to put in that barrel. So I don't know. I think it's something that we should take a good look at and investigate, because I think, again, the investment is perhaps costly upfront. But also, I think that in the long run, it might save us some money, and especially get that number, as you said, from 25 down to, excuse me, 30 down to 25, and perhaps five each year. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Sorrell.
Yes. Gunther, each year, you have certain days that are recycling days where you can, the residents can bring their recyclables down to a certain area. How many days during the year do you have that?
So in previous budget cycle, we had two household hazardous waste days. Currently, with the staff, we do a monthly event alternating. One month is a drop-off event at DPW. The subsequent or the alternating month is a household hazardous waste. So there will be 12 monthly events for residents to come down to.
And is that scheduled on the...
LowellRecycle.org, and you can click on CHARM or hazardous waste, and you'll see the schedule. Even better is to download the free app.
I have it.
It works on both phone platforms, put in your address, and you'll have that, including the yard waste schedule. The health department had the unwanted medication that's on the schedule. So there's a lot of good things on the app.
Yes. And I also want to say thank you to you for this wonderful presentation, and thank you for all that you and your inspectors do, because you're working hard. And so I think, I think this is fantastic, and I think we're moving forward in a cleaner way. So thank you.
You're very welcome. All set? Okay. Next, we have capital planning needs. Madam Manager.
Thank you. This was in response to a request from Counselor Elliott for the city's five-year capital plan and capital needs. Chief Financial Officer Connor Baldwin prepared it, and I don't know if there are any questions for him or if this subcommittee wanted to take a look at it.
Counselor Elliott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a very good report. It's a very comprehensive report. I just wanted to ask a question. Does this include deferred maintenance or recommendations from the Collins Report?
No, those have not been incorporated in here yet.
Are they dollar figures? I can't recall if they're dollar figures associated with...
The study will have the dollar figures, the E M G study that we're waiting for completion. They've gone through most of the schools, and they're in the process of going through the municipal buildings and looking at the Collins Report and then putting prices and priorities to those in that list. So that would be when we'd have those numbers available.
Okay, good. Well, thank you. We'll be using this report. We've had a discussion at the first, the previous finance subcommittee. We'll be meeting again. So if there's no objection, I'm sure I'd like to refer this report over that we've had a conversation about anyway.
Counselor, Counselor...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Madam Manager, we do have a capital planning need in the senior center. We do desperately need a bus. I know we have a bus campaign. We're trying to meet some, I know the money is tight in the city, but their bus broke down like six times within two months. And every time it needs to be towed or repaired, the friends pay for that. And we're running through all our money at a rapid rate. So I know that you know that we desperately need one. I'm about to ask, when we do have a settled congressperson, if we could ask them to apply for a transportation bond bill or some type of funding. I'm looking at grants, I'm looking at everything, because if we buy a bus and we pay for it, we're depleting all our funds, and we have nothing left. So I'm begging for a bus for the senior center, maybe on a smaller scale, maybe we don't need one that big. But, and I'm not asking for the city to pay the whole thing. We'd be happy to do our fair share as well, but it's very well needed. I don't know if the department head reached out to state that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor, you're absolutely right. I'm very aware of it. In fact, this summer, we did take some people to look at the Hamilton Canal District close by. One of those 99-degree days, the bus broke down, which was okay because we could walk. But the week before, it's my understanding, it broke down, you know, far away from Lowell with seniors aboard on just as hot a day. So the bus is in very tough shape, and at this point, is taking a lot of resources just to keep it running, and it barely runs.
Yes, you're absolutely right. Thank you so much.
We all said, "Any other questions?" Counselor Kennedy?
Counselor Elliott had a motion to refer this.
I'm going to have, read the motion.
The motion was simply, by Counselor Elliott, seconded by Counselor Kennedy, refer, report to the finance subcommittee for discussion.
And it was seconded. Okay, well, it's that. Anything else? Counselor Mercy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before we go any further, could I suspend the rules to please bring in, out of order, six...
I just need a motion to accept and place in the file.
Okay.
So moved.
Counselor Kennedy, seconded by Counselor Elliott. Proceed.
6.4, Counselor Sorrell and my motion together. We have two people registered to speak, and We have two people registered to speak, and I didn't really want them to stay here.
Let's suspend the rules.
Okay, suspend second. Okay, uh, this motion also doesn't need to be seconded. It's a motion by Counselor Mercy and Counselor Sorrelllo, request permission for the Lowell Firefighters Association to move the Lowell Doughboy statue to the North Common to make way for the monument. Committee to construct an 8 and 9/11 monument on city property at the corner of Fletcher and Willie Street.
Yes.
Do you want the speakers to?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much for suspending the rules to allow this to come in. There is a monument in front of the Lowell Firefighters Club on a patch of city-owned property that was dedicated in 1923 honoring 36-acre men who gave their lives during World War I. This monument was called the Lowell Doughboy Statue and is located at the intersection of Fletcher and Willie Streets in Lowell. At the request of the Lowell Firefighters Club and a committee, they're asking permission to move this monument to the North Common at a place of greater significance and erect it in its place, a 9/11 memorial to all the public safety personnel that perished on September 11, 2001. When I say they want to move it to the North Common, we're not going to move it to obliterate it and, and not have it be seen anymore. It's going to be in a significant place that, that highlights it as well. The cost would be at the expense of the Lowell Firefighters Club and the committee, and not the city. Veterans groups were contacted, and there was no objection. The Acre Neighborhood Action Group was notified and had no objection. Over 100 people were called who might have been related to any of the 36 men whose names appeared on the statue. Three were distant relatives, and one was hesitant, but he has since changed his mind to agree. I did receive a call yesterday from a man who objected. He told me he would have liked to come to this meeting and voice his opinion, but he was unable to make the meeting this evening. And I told him, and this is unprecedented, and I hope my co-maker of the motion has no objection, but I said, and with respect for fairness, that you couldn't be here, I would read your letter to me. So, if there's no objection, I would.
No objection.
I would do that. I don't agree with him, but he has a right to be heard. So, I would, I would like to do that. And I would like to first refer the motion to Manager Donahue and to get permission to transfer the monument to the North Common so that they can begin the fundraising efforts. And I'd also like to refer it to the park subcommittee as well, and this gentleman will come before the park subcommittee, but he does have a right to speak, so if there's no objection, I'd like to read what he wrote me. And I didn't know he was going to write a letter and a half, but I'll try to make it as fast as I can. A hundred years ago, our country helped the allied powers to victory in World War I. Over 2 million young Americans from across the country fought. Lowell was no exception. Approximately 116,000 Americans lost their lives on foreign soil for this cause. 36 of those young men were from the acre, right here in the acre. These 36 lives were cut short two years from just one neighborhood. 36 families that will never hold again. Private John Lee O'Conley was one of the acre heroes that never came home, and the square surrounds the monument, immortalizing these young men as named in his honor. We would never change that name. We would never do anything to that name, so that has nothing to do with that. But Private Conley died on October 23, 1918. He wasn't killed in an accident or by disease like many World War I soldiers were. He was killed in action by the enemy. Nearly 100 years to the day, that Private Conley was cut down by enemy fire. We sit here debating to move the statue honoring him and the other soldiers. So, I guess through his letter, he's sticking up for Private Conley, resolving to tuck it away in a park. I don't think that we're going to do that, but that's what his opinion is. When the statue was erected by a grateful neighborhood, they did not choose to place it in a park. While the North Common did exist at the time, they chose to place, to a place of honor as a, at a busy intersection on a major street in a neighborhood the soldiers were all from. I could comment in rebuttal to him, but I won't say anymore except what he says. Over 13,000 cars a day drive past the statue today. How many people will see it daily in a park? 100, 500? The answer is simply not enough. In 1923, Mayor Donovan stated during the unveiling, "That as mayor, I'm pleased at the privilege of accepting this monument now unveiled as a permanent memorial to our soldiers dead in behalf of the city of Lowell." The intent of the ceremony that day was to install a permanent memorial in that exact location. Do you think that they would have ever imagined that it would be moved 100 years in the future? Inscribed on the monument itself, along with the names of the men's killed, are the following words, "Least we forget, and to live in the hearts we have left behind is not to die." Are we so removed from their sacrifice that we have indeed forgotten them? Do they no longer live in our hearts? Moving this monument from its square place of honor is forgetting them and pushing them aside. If the statue is moved for another, will the city be having the same debate, comma, 100 years from now? Are we so removed from history that we have decided that one soldier, uh, one sacrifice outweighs another, simply because we can clearly remember the bravery of those heroes, but not another? One sacrifice of bravery does not outweigh another. What kind of precedent are we setting? Three generations have come and gone since the Yager soldier's ultimate sacrifice. They no longer have loved ones and family that remember them to speak. It is up to us as a grateful American to remember the, and honor those heroes. So, Mayor, Counselor, and Madam Manager, I offer a compromise as an attempt to please all parties involved. Please consider placing the 9/11 memorial to honor our first responders at JFK Plaza with the other monuments in front of City Hall. They will ensure that it will be front and center at the headquarters of our brave police and fire department. As a combat veteran of Iraq war myself, I beg you not to move this statue from its place of honor. A country that forgets its heroes does not deserve them. But this is his letter, and I, I, he has a right to his opinion in an effort to be fair. I promised him that I would read it, so, I mean, uh, my concern is that.
Who's letter?
Who's the letter?
He didn't even really want me to tell who he was, because he works for the city, and he was afraid to have any, but he works in the engineer's office.
I mean, but this letter, we'd ask, we'd ask of any registered speaker to give their name, so, I find that unacceptable.
I know. This is, I have his name. Joseph, um, I can't find his name, but he did give me his name. He lives on Victoria Street. He just, I don't know where it is, but, but I told this gentleman that the majority rules, the majority ruled on the marijuana issue. I didn't support it, but they won. I didn't support the high school being downtown, but the majority rules, and they won. So, I told him, he's probably in the minority with this issue. I know many people support it. Many people are willing to move forward. I know that the, what some of the plans are, and I think it's a place of honor. And there are the same amount of traffic that goes by every single day. I will find his name, but if, if somebody else wants.
Counselor Sorrelllo, registered speaker, then anybody else wants to speak at that?
Yes, I, I would just like to mirror what Counselor Mercy has said, and it's, you can actually, the Doughboy is actually looking at where, where he would be moved to. It's a beautiful area on the Common, and, um, and so, moving, moving this to the, the park subcommittee, I think will help to hash out a lot of the issues and, and to get, um, I've requested that, that letters be written by the interested parties to have, to have them in hand and, and actual handwritten information, and yes, we want this. And, um, and so, I think that just having it moved to the subcommittee will aid in hashing this out. To move it, yes, there was a motion made by Counselor Mercy.
Counselor Mercy, second.
Yes. So, I think that that will hash out any, you know, all the situations, and we get to talk about it. I think that's important. Thank you.
Okay. The registered speaker, then I'll go back to Counsel.
Bill DeRozier. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor and city councilors and city, uh, uh, city, uh.
Madam Manager.
Madam Manager, I apologize. My name is Bill DeRozier. I know most of you. I'm retired fire chief, and I'm currently on the board of directors for the Firefighters Association. If I could just start by saying, I agree, I, the letter was very eloquent, and I agree with almost everything in that letter. The gentleman is right on target with all his comments. I don't think anybody could disagree with what he, for the majority of what he said. To give you a little history of where we came from, these discussions started about a year and a half ago. And when we did that at the Firefighters Association, we fully agreed that that monument deserved all the recognition and continued to receive the recognition and the honor that it was intended and placed for. So, the last thing we would want to do is to give any type of disregard to that monument. That was not our, it would never be our intention, and still isn't today, our intention. As we progressed through the process to get here today, we met with many organizations, and one of them is the Action Committee, which Mr. Willeth here will speak in a second. We went to them because we found, we felt they were the, the progressive neighborhood groups from the group that originally placed this monument there. So, we went to them first to see if they, to get their opinions, if this was something that they could endorse. And they did tell me, yes, they had a meeting, and they thought, they have, they felt they had the perfect location for the monument, and, quite honestly, we were hoping to have it done by this November. Like I said, we started a year and a half ago. This November is the 100th year anniversary of the ending of World War I. It's impossible to do right now. Time went by way too fast for us, and we had issues to deal with. So, we dealt with the Acre Neighborhood Group, the Action Group. We went and met with several, uh, local leaders in the, in the veterans era, or veterans groups around here. We met a couple of times with the Greater Lowell Veterans Council, and we explained to them what we were trying to do, and, uh, everyone that I spoke to agreed with it. The Veterans Council took a vote to endorse the movement of it and for the rededication of that monument. So, we felt we were dealing with the Acre Neighborhood Group, the people that put it there. We dealt with the veterans group. At the time, we were dealing with the parks commissioner, Tom Belgaud, who has since retired, so that kind of set us back a little bit after his retirement. Then we did meet with the city manager after July, and she gave us some, she listened to our appeal, and she followed it up with some valid areas of concern that we were trying to deal with, and we still continue to deal with them. As they, as Counselor Mercy has said, we had made over 100 phone calls trying to reach people. Now, we're still finding that there are some people out there that we can reach. So, we, last thing we want to do would be offend any, any family members in the city, especially the acre section, that their loved ones were, their names are on that monument. So, we, we tried to deal with that, and we still go on to deal with it. So, when we finally, we eventually had a meeting with a couple of managers, a couple of councilors, and we thought that to formally address or identify and address and resolve any concerns would be maybe to send it to a subcommittee so that we could be documented, and the subcommittee could address any concerns with a, with a valid and complete answers, and then bring it back to the council. So, uh, that's, that's our opinion of what would happen. I hope you can, uh, support Counselor's motion and the motion that was made to send it to committee so we could, uh, I guess, address the concerns and get full answers for it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dave Willett.
Good evening, everybody. There we go. My name's Dave Willett. Resident of Lowell, 113 Cabbage Street, president, founder of the Acre Neighborhood Group Action. And welcome, and thank you, everybody, for letting us have a minute to talk. When Bill came up to me, he was talking about moving the, the monument, and they didn't know where they were going to move it, but, um, through our conversation, I, we discussed it, and I let him know that this needed to stay in the acre. It was, he had the acre names, it was about the families there, and we needed to keep it close to where it was. Well, over the last seven years, the North Common has been completely renewed. The state redid the, the pool, the pool is brand new. We worked very close together, and, um, we got the basketball courts redone. We have a great, uh, group of guys over there that put the teams together. There's 280 kids that play on the basketball team, it's a nice organized sport. Redid the handball court. The amphitheater's running. Mill City grows, has 40 garden sports. Uh, there's a new playground put in, so it's far from a neglected area. It's, uh, there's a lot of pride on that North Common. There is only one area that's not done, and that's the little spot by that, uh, good little store called Hole in the Wall. It's a brand-new sub shop. The guy is running it, fantastic. There's a lot of business going out of there. There's a little seating area right across the street from it, which is neglected, and that was our last part on the North Common to do. If you're standing at the Doughboy, you literally can almost take a baseball and throw it from one spot to the other. I mean, it's that close. And so, to give it the respect and to give it a beautiful new home, because where it is at the corner is a great spot, but cars go by at 30, 40 miles an hour. It's in a thing. You never see anybody have a chance to stop to just look at it. Where we're going to put it, uh, we plan on putting a little park, little seats around it, put a nice new plaque, put some explanation what it is. One of the stones, because we've put quite a few stones in the acre, we did the Macheris Corner, we have one at the amphitheater, Whiting Street Park, so, right here, we could put a nice stone in memory of, so that the, the young kids and the people who are going on the Common now can actually look at this and understand what it's about, that people did give their life, and this monument means more than just sitting in the corner over there. And we don't want to change the name of Conley Square. It's going to stay Conley Square. But the firefighters are stuck in this little predicament because the land is, is only building, and the only little green space is right there. And they want to put in a nice 70, $80,000 monument. It's not like just something they want to just throw together. And, uh, they have raised money before. There was a, um, one that Bill was telling me, a firefighter ran into a problem. Within a month, they rose $90,000. So, we can have the best of both worlds. We can give that a brand-new spot, give it the dignity and respect, do a new ribbon-cutting, and the kids of today and the people of today will know what it's about. And then also, we can have a well-deserved 911 fire memorial on the spot at the Firefighters Club. So, we're just trying to work together and trying to find a solution to make everybody happy, and, like you said, that gentleman, uh, that was a very well-written note, and I just want to let him know that if he comes to the meetings, that by no way are we looking to disrespect that monument. Uh, we're doing everything we can to find a company that will move it, make sure nothing gets hurt, and then give it a beautiful new home. So, I thank you for your time. Have a good day. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counselor Mercy?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. His name is Joe Assenza, A-S-S-E-N-Z-A, 17 Victoria Street.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? Counselor Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm very happy to support the motion to send this to the city manager and also to the board of parks. I think having a monument for, uh, 9/11 first responders is a good idea. What I did suggest to the firefighters group is that they may want to include, um, police officers in that, since they were first responders, too. So, that rather than ending up eventually with a monument for the firefighters and then another monument for the police, to me, it seems like it would be nice if there was one monument for both. And, um, I guess then that brings us to the expense. If what's intended is a, is a monument that's going to cost in the vicinity of 70 or 80 thousand dollars, I believe that the firefighters expect that by the end of the year, they will have probably 10% of that, or maybe $8,000, from fundraising efforts over the next few months. they will have probably 10% of that or maybe $8,000 from fundraising efforts over the next few months, which means that they have a long way to go. And I think that what needs to be considered is the cost of the monument, which they're estimating at $70,000 or $80,000, plus the site work for the monument, plus the site work for the, if the World War I monument is moved, plus the moving of the monument, which is all going to be a good amount of money. So I would think that we would want to make sure that the money is in place before we were to... I don't think we want to be in a position where we're moving the World War I monument anywhere without knowing that the funding is going to be there for the 9/11 monument. So I think there's, you know, I think it's a good idea. I think everybody is well-intentioned on, on this effort. But I do think that there's a lot of things to consider and that's why I think it's a really good idea for it to be before the, before the city council subcommittee and for the city manager in order that they can work together. And I also think it would help provide, I mean, to me, for a project like this, the Division Planning and Development should be involved. And so if they're going to be involved, it's a lot easier if it stays in the subcommittee and with the city manager. It's just easier for the city to be involved than if it's just the firefighters kind of going on their own. So I'm happy to support the motion, but I do think that there are issues. And another issue is that there are 36 names on the monument. And I know there are some people that live in the acre now that whose descendants are, who are descendants of people on the monument who have not been contacted to this point. So I do think that it's important that a, that every effort be made to get in touch with the 36 families who's, who's, who have people on that monument, as well as veterans groups. And I think that I was, I met with Council Cirillo and with Council Mercier, with the firefighters several days ago. And one of the things that Council Cirillo suggested at the time is that if they're going to do this, what they may want to do is commission a local artist to do the, to do the work. And I think that that is also a really good idea and something that the subcommittee and the city manager's office should take a look at. And I guess that's all I have to say now. I'm happy to support the motion, but I do think that there are issues that need to be addressed before we move forward on this.
Council Milonazzo?
Thank you. First, let me begin by thanking everyone involved up to this point. I am, I'm confident that everybody is well-intentioned in bringing this forward and I will support the motion going to the subcommittee. Just picking up on some of what Council Kennedy said about there are other issues. And again, I'm not questioning the Lowell Firefighters Association at all, but my, my concern is, as Council Kennedy said, there are police and there are first responders, there are EMTs and so forth, and I'm sure that at the end of the day, they will all be honored. But my initial thought is that Lowell Firefighters Association runs a, runs a bar, isn't it? It's a bar. That's where they go and they enjoy drinks, which is fine. And I, and I'm not questioning that. But at the end of the day, thinking about a 9/11 monument, to me, should be on very solemn ground. And it may be where they're talking about putting it, where this statue is. I think that more thought needs to go into this. Again, like I said, I'll support sending it to the, to the subcommittee and I know everybody up to this point been very well-intentioned, but a 9/11 monument in a city the size of Lowell, 105,000, I'm not sure it should be adjacent to a bar. That's just my opinion. Thank you.
Council Mercier?
Does the VFW club on Plain Street have a bar? But yet they serve this country and they died for their country.
Any further discussion? Okay. Motion passes. Next, we're going to go back to 3.3, communication. Accept the reservation of SLSA election commissioner. I need a motion to accept and place and file by Council Elliot, second by Council Cirillo. Next, we have communication from the city manager requests out of state travel, one DPW, one career center person, one LPD, one Lowell Police Department. I need a motion to adopt. By Council Kennedy, second by Council Elliot. Any discussion? Roll call.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, in fact, it's not one from the career center. I think it's three, altogether four, and two from the police department, if you look at the report. And I think this all paid for by the, particularly for the career center, paid for by the grant.
Yes. Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Council Elliot?
Yes.
Council Kennedy?
Yes.
Council Weahy?
Yes.
Council Mercier?
Yes.
Council Milonazzo?
Yes.
Council Noon?
Yes.
Mayor Samaris?
Yes.
Council Cirillo?
Yes.
Council Conway?
Yes.
Nine yeas.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council.
Could I just go back to 3.3 for a second? We accepted the resignation of someone from the election commission. Could I just ask a question? I should have asked before. With the procedures, now that there is an opening, you know, how can people go about applying or do we post it? Do we...
Yeah, we will. We will post it, but it's a good point that we can let people know. This, this particular opening is for a Democrat. You know, the, the election commission is made up of so many Democrats, so many Republicans. This individual is a Democrat, so it would be a Democrat to replace. And so I would say to people who are Democrats that are interested to send a letter and resume to my office as soon as possible. We'll post it and we're trying to spread the word for those who are interested. We do have an election, obviously, coming up in November, so it's really important that we have a full complement of, of election commissioners.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for indulging me to go back to the side that we voted on because I think that's exactly what my point was, Madam Manager. And just for the people at home, there are four commissioners, correct? So it's two Republicans, two Democrats. It's not, it's not a split. But I think point well, point well made. There's an election coming up and it's important, given some of the, you know, the issues that have been raised, that we have a full complement of election commissioners.
And we have and will thank the individual who resigned. There was a great deal asked of our election commissioners in this most recent election in terms of their time and it was, it was something that was difficult for this person to do in conjunction with their work duties, so.
Thank you.
Thank them for their service, all of them.
All right. Thank you. We'll go back to now votes from the city manager, 4.1. Vote to accept the donation of a bike rack from University of Massachusetts Lowell. Waive the full reading, second reading by title. Authorize the city manager, behalf of the city of Lowell, to accept a gift from University of Massachusetts Lowell Outdoor and Bicycle Program of five bicycle racks. I need a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
Second by Council Kennedy. Roll call.
Council Elliot?
Yes.
Council Kennedy?
Yes.
Council Weahy?
Yes.
Council Mercier?
Yes.
Council Milonazzo?
Yes.
Council Noon?
Yes.
Mayor Samaris?
Yes.
Council Cirillo?
Yes.
Council Conway?
Yes.
Nine yeas.
All right. Next, the vote transfer $156,435 to outfit Krieger Studio van. Waive the full reading and second reading by title. To transfer PEG funding into the FY19 budget for the Krieger Studio van. I need a motion to adopt. By Council Elliot, second by Council Weahy.
Mr. Mayor?
Discussion?
Could I just ask through you to the city manager, this is for, this is to outfit the van?
Correct.
But do we have money to man the van? To, to...
Well, it's my understanding that there are two staff members that are working in conjunction with the TV studio currently. There had previously been four, but there are still two. We did receive, obviously, the council had voted on this last fiscal year, but it wasn't possible to have the purchase order completed within the fiscal year. So rather than let that money lapse to the general fund, it was put back into the PEG fund. So this is transferring it back out of the PEG fund. And we did receive notification from the, one of the teachers at the high school that it's important to get this vote in, in the pipeline for the outfitting of it. There is a lead time. It may have to go back out to bid because the last time it was bid and the bid is now probably stale. And so we don't want to end up in the same exact place where the fiscal year is running out and because of the lead time to get the, the equipment ordered and installed, that we would be up against the end of the fiscal year as well.
Okay. But once it's outfitted, which we think will take, what, a couple of months or something like that?
I think it's a few months, given the work that's ahead. There was only one person, one company that bid on it the last time and they, they seem to have two or three months of work ahead of them is what...
10 to 11 weeks lead time.
It's 10 to 11 weeks lead time to get the work done.
Okay. But once that's done and once the van's ready to go, then we do have people that will be able to operate the van on a regular basis, right?
That, that's my understanding. There are, there are two teachers that are working with students over there right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any roll call?
Council Elliot?
Yes.
Council Kennedy?
Yes.
Council Weahy?
Yes.
Council Mercier?
Yes.
Council Milonazzo?
Yes.
Council Noon?
Yes.
Mayor Samaris?
Yes.
Council Cirillo?
Yes.
Council Conway?
Yes.
Nine yeas.
All right, thank you. Next, a report of the subcommittee. Environmental Flood Issue Subcommittee of October 2, 2018. Any...
Yes, thank you. We had a great subcommittee meeting. Councilors, myself, Councilors Kennedy, Elliot and Weahy were there, along with Michael Gary, Jay Mason, the Chair of the Lowell Sustainability Council, Cormac McCarthy, Michaela McCarthy, and James from Revision Energy. And the goal by the Sustainability Council was to increase sustainability by increasing an alternative energy source. This is, Mass Energy Clean Energy Grant is helping Lowell with this. This, this is all volunteer-based, helping to educate on solar, educate Lowell on solar energy and air source heat pumps. They're trying to accelerate Lowell's goal to be 100%, to be renewable by 100%, 100%. The Solarized Mass Program is in 72 communities and has 3,341 systems contracted. And the Solarized Lowell people had their first event and there were 60, roughly 60 people signed up. So that was fantastic. Massachusetts has the fifth highest electric rate in the country. So if we can mitigate that, that would be great. And there are 18 pan, on a, on a, a, a regular-sized home, there are 18 panels on a home. And, and also, if the utility will have, will, has a buyback program for any energy that you produce, you actually get paid for that energy. And so let me say, there was a lot of information that, that came out of this, this subcommittee meeting. It was really, Council Elliot asked a lot of questions, very good questions. There, the estimate to come out to your house is free. There's, there's no cost to that. And Council Elliot asked about heat pumps. Are they commercial for schools, thinking about possibly getting them into the new high school? And I guess the Sustainability Council is, is talking about having these heat pumps come into the schools. And regarding roofs, there's, the panels actually shade the roofs, which makes the lifespan of your roof longer. So I, I'm trying to think if there was anything else, but it was, it was, there was a good conversation and I think this is a wonderful program that, that Lowell is, is working on. And, and so, yeah, I, I think that that was pretty much everything.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, I would just like to add two things. One thing is that there may be a conception out there that this is just for single-family homeowners, but actually landlords and people who own apartment buildings, say 24 units, would also be eligible to partake in this program and I think that's a really good thing. And then one thing that we, one idea that came out of the subcommittee, although we didn't do it as a motion, but the idea was, it was suggested that maybe it would be a good idea because they're, because the Sustainability Council has been charged with kind of doing the marketing on this, that maybe it would be a good idea if there was space dedicated on the webs, on the city's website for them so that if they came up with a pretty succinct little description of the proposal, that, that might, that might do well. And then also that from, and might make, you know, increase the exposure of the program so more people would participate than, than are going to if we're depending on people to just, to have watched the subcommittee meeting on TV earlier today, which some people did, I'm sure, but I'm also just as certain that a lot of people didn't, may have missed it. And then the other thing is, I know periodically the city sends out mailings for different things, citywide. And so if the Sustainability Council also were to come up with a, like a one-page flyer that could be included in that mailing, that would also just sort of describe what the program is and also refer people to the website if they needed further information, that, you know, those type of, that type of marketing might help increase the participation in the program, which from everything that we heard, I think it's a, it's a very good program. Thank you.
Any further discussion? I need a motion to accept this report of progress by Council Conway, second by Council Mercier. All right, next, we have city council motions. First motion by Council Weahy, Council Conway. Request city manager investigate the feasibility of installing wide speed bumps at school locations. First name, Mr. Council Weahy.
Thank you. Through you, the mayor, manager. Motion basically speaks for itself. If we can just investigate how much it costs to install those wide asphalt speed bumps, whether they're better to be stamped, whether they stamp them with a color or if they just lay them out and paint them. But if we could just get some options and see if it's a, a solution that would help at, at the schools. Thank you.
Council Conway, any comments?
Yeah, thank you. Just, just very briefly, I, last week, we were talking about the making the streets and especially around the schools as, as safe as possible. And this, this looks like it could be, again, with investigation, it could be something that we might utilize and perhaps not in all the schools too. I think it depends on the location. So anyway, I look forward to the report. Thank you.
All set. Council Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Madam Manager. Can I ask you a question about the motions? Now, some time ago, you served with us on the council and I thought it was such a good idea back then where we meet for a council meeting on Tuesday and then Wednesday morning about 10 o'clock, the manager would meet with all the department heads. Do you do that?
We do.
Oh, good. All right. Just curious. That's a good thing. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Next, we have a motion by Council Noon. Require, request city manager have Lowell Police Department and Lowell Fire Department host a community workshop regarding job opportunities in each department as well as an outlining application process for those jobs. Council Noon? One second. I need a second. I'm sorry. Council Weahy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think any workshop, we need to give more time for each of those department or maybe a combined department to do outreach to the community, all the communities. So give it a long time span so that you have ample of time to do outreach and to get more people to those workshops. So, thank you.
All set. Thank you. Next, another motion by Council Noon. Request city manager update city council on future scheduled executive sessions regarding contract negotiations with fire and police units. Second by Council Weahy?
Mr. Mayor, the motion speaks for itself. I'm looking for that day to come. So, thanks.
All right, Council Noon, will you please take the question?
Next, Mayor Samaras, a motion with, requesting the city managers to work with the National Grid to develop a presentation to the city council on the step and procedure that are taken by the National Grid and the city to ensure safety for resident of Lowell, second by Council Mercy, Council, Mayor Samaras, go ahead.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Madam Manager, the recent gas problems in Lawrence, Andover, North Andover, put people on notice of the potential problems or the dangers of gas, and basically, there are no problems in Lowell, and if we carefully monitor our systems, we're okay, but I think what I've had in my office, I've had people call in the office, people ask, you know, stop in the street, what is Lowell doing to ensure that we're safe? Now, the thing is, you know, National Grid might be reluctant to come, but all I'm asking is that they come during mayor's business to the entire city council to explain, you know, how they handle or ensure the problems like that happened in Lawrence don't happen here in Lowell. So in other words, basically, what are the safety procedures, what are they doing at this present moment to update how they monitor the gas, and also, I think from what I heard, when people were having that problem, they were in certain neighborhoods, people knew how to shut the gas main off right away, so there are people in certain neighborhoods were just reacting very quickly to shut down their own gas main, rather than wait for the fire department or something like that, so, you know, in general, just to provide us information, okay? Thank you.
Madam Manager?
Thank you, we will, as the city engineer mentioned, there are weekly meetings happening with the, with National Grid, this is an important issue, especially in light of what happened north, they did give us a letter, but I think it could be a more comprehensive response, and we need to, we will certainly encourage and invite them to come to the council to speak to these issues.
Council Mercy?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, they had an excellent editorial in the paper, whoever wrote that did a great job, that reiterated that we, as a council, should be concerned to get National Grid before the council, to reassure and explain to the public what steps are being taken to make sure that there are no leaks or pressure or problems or whatever, to reassure the public that what their protocol is, so I think that's an excellent motion, it's an excellent idea, and if you have time, read that editorial, because it was simply well-put, and it is of concern to people, you don't think of something until it's too late and it happens, and the devastation that took place for the people in Lawrence, North Andover and Andover, and they're still without heat, they got space heaters and hot plates, and very, very difficult, very sad. I know I want to thank all the public safety people, Salvation Army, the Red Cross, everybody that went out there to help them, but we would not want that to happen in our city, so to be safe, it would be a good idea, as this motion says, to stress that and reassure the public, thank you so much.
Council Milonazo?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, I think it's a very good motion, I think it's good to have this presentation, I guess, I don't know if the maker of the motion would object, but I would actually ask someone not only from National Grid to be here, but someone from the Department of Public Utilities as well, to have someone from DPU actually in the presentation.
Good idea.
As well, thank you.
Mayor, Mayor Samaras?
Thank you, that's a good idea by Council Milonazo, and Madam Manager, I think National Grid might be somewhat reluctant to do this, but I think they have to be told, this is not for an ambush, this is for information, and cities like Lowell or towns around us need that kind of information, so I think it would hold well for them to show up, and if they wouldn't, I think we have a problem.
Madam Manager?
I do want to share this with the council that just came out in the press, and that was that the Department of Public Utilities, DPU, is alleging that National Grid had some safety violations, they're citing, I'm just reading this, as, as we're seeing this, it was just released a short, few minutes ago, but they're charging that there were twenty-nine instances where they may have violated federal gas pipeline safety regulations, including one in the city of Lowell. So I think in light of this recent report in allegations from DPU, it is all the more critical that we have National Grid come here to the council and discuss, I don't know the nature of it, this is just something that was just reported in the State House news, so I think it's, it's important, obviously, because of what's going on, and now, because we appear to be one of the twenty-nine instances that are being cited, so, we will certainly contact them first thing about scheduling a time to come to the council.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Nothing else, then, any announcement? Motion to adjourn?
So.
Meeting adjourned.